Call to order, the regular city commission meeting of October 12th, 2021. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amy, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Budnick?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Here.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Metzger?
Here. Before we start the meeting, I just wanted to acknowledge the presence of the ridger of the year, John Wright.
Yes.
Well deserved honor. We won't ask for a speech, but if you'd like to make one, you can.
Thank you all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is the 2021 City of Pleasant Ridge Beautification Award.
Readers, good evening. My name is Don Daniels. Can I pull this down? You're fine. You can hear. And on behalf of the beautification committee, I'm delighted to oversee this evening's recognition, and I join with them to celebrate these four homeowners and their accomplishments with the fine work on their homes. I may need my glasses. So before I get to the presentation, it is important for me to acknowledge with gratitude the work of the beautification committee, whose members include Amy Bowering, who's unfortunately not with us this evening, Jennifer Cuber, Cheryl Laidlaw, Norma Melton, Jan Troyder, and Amanda Wall. There we are, yep. It's also important to thank Tom Troyder, our resident PR photographer extraordinaire, who provides us with these beautiful photographs. So when this committee met last year in 2020, we concluded that due to the pandemic and the lack of in-person attendance of commission meetings, we would table this recognition. Until this year, they combined the awards for both 20 and 21. So, second, there we go, thank you. Assisted ably by my AV extraordinary. So the role of this committee is to discern and select Pleasant Ridge homeowners who have invested their time and talents to enhance the aesthetics of their home. So as you can see, the city is divided into seven zones, and each committee member selects two potential recipients. The committee then reconvenes and whittles that list out to four homeowners. Each of these recipients will receive a beautiful Marshall Hovland-designed tile commissioned especially for this recognition. And if you drive around the city, you'll already see signage in place recognizing that achievement as well.
It is cool.
It is. Now to the recognition. 37 Fairwood Boulevard, Ashley and Jeff Immerman. Yeah, come on, yeah, thank you. And yeah, stay up here because we want a picture with everyone this year. So the unique architecture and I, yeah, go stand by Jen if you would. Unique architecture and the and the eye-catching contrast between the dark siding and white trim give 37 Fairwood Boulevard an undeniable charm and appeal. With a warm wood toned door flanked by an American flag and a pop of color from the matching planters, the front porch immediately draws your attention. But it's the small two-window dormers on the facade that really steals the show. Well manicured garden beds along each side of the porch add additional depth and visual interest. Another unique feature that distinguishes this home is an appealing covered side porch with a custom railing and warm wood tones that connects to an inviting raised duck in the back of the house. Would you have any comments?
That was a very good job. Thank you to the committee and thank you, it's, this is, we're really proud and grateful that Pleasant Ridge is our home. And we were really just inspired by our neighbors who were just have incredible houses and beautiful homes and just trying to, just trying to be a part of all that. And we're grateful to be a part of this great community.
Great, thank you. So 80, yeah. 89 Oakdale Boulevard, Gene Heron and Jeffrey Husby. So immaculate grooming and attention to detail makes 89 Oakdale a real winner. This Tudor revival home is approached by a decorative path that takes a turn from the porch to meet up to the driveway. On either side of the porch, a neatly trimmed low hedge holds two anchoring shrubs and a bevy of blooming hydrangeas. Moderately sized ornamental trees on either side of the walkway are surrounded by a ring of stones and hosta to peddle the pots filled with seasonal plantings flank the stairs. And in my email conversation with Jeffrey, he added, "There are additional details that should not be overlooked." The homeowners have installed traditional bronze screens that were made by a supplier in California, really harkening back to the original time. They also had a few replacement heavy exterior dorms, storm, sorry, with glazed end glass made locally. Congratulations to you as well. Anything you'd like to say?
I don't think there's anything that we can say that really wasn't already said before, taking our inspiration from the neighbors. Really quite pleased that we live here in this community. Thank you.
Great. And the next recipient, 16 Fairwood Boulevard, Jeffrey Diamond and Thomas Hosinski. And Mrs. Thomas, yeah.
Before you start, the guy that does all this is in California. Videotape what you're about to say. I help pick things out, but he does all the work.
We see him out there.
Yes.
So what first, okay, what first catches your attention with this stunning brick colonial home is the impressive and immaculately cared-for landscaping that surrounds the property on all sides. A classic combination of hydrangeas and manicured boxwood hedges provide a vibrant natural contrast to the traditional brick facade. Thoughtful, eye-catching planters line the sides of front walkway, creating a welcoming front porch environment. The charm does not stop there, and inviting brick pathway leads around to a cozy back patio surrounded by wrought iron fencing and a decorative gate. At nighttime, the exterior lighting elevates the impact of the natural environment and makes this home a true standout. Congratulations to you both.
All right, I appreciate you indulging, Mayor. Very proud of the home. We've lived there several years. It's our second house in Pleasant Ridge. Thanks to your husband, and we're just very happy to live here and be part of the neighborhood.
Congratulations.
And our last recipient, 11 Elm Park Boulevard, Amy and Chip Kulatowski. So having purchased this home in 2013, Amy and Chip embarked on an aggressive renewal of most aspects of the home interior as well as the exterior. This Georgian colonial exudes warmth, welcome, and traditional Americano. Overall, it is unusually asymmetric, yet nicely balanced. The landscaping is in keeping with the style of the home, incorporating tightly clipped boxwood hedges that enclose a profusion of hydrangeas against the facade. From the top of the circular drive, one can enter a bricked area surrounded by the same neat boxwood hedges, this time filled with an abundance of pink shrub roses around two facing painted benches. The intense pink accent is echoed in the pattern of the bench pillows, in the porch urn arrangements, and the elegant door wreath that changes seasonally, by the way. So congratulations to you both.
Same as Ben said, we're very grateful to the committee and for being selected, and also congratulations to all the other winners. It's really, it's a great community. We love it here. Also a second home. And we love it. It's a great place to raise a family.
Doing the garden tour, that was really, that was a fun.
Glad it's over. It was awesome. I miss all my friends at the dog park because I was working out.
In fact, stay right there because we're going to invite the rest of the homeowners as well. I want to get a picture of this. So the beautification committee, along with our entire community, hope these homeowners accept this recognition as a testament to their commitment of improving the overall aesthetic, not only of their homes, but of our entire city. Thank you for investing in this community we all love and treasure. This is so well deserved for all of you. Thank you. Please come up here. Picture. Commission, you have to stand behind and look happy. Somebody, Jan's going to post us on PR PR. Oh, you can stand, my AV and ready? Work at one.
Work with a mask.
Great, thank you too.
It's fun.
Congratulations.
Thanks you guys. It's a great way to open a meeting.
No joke. Everything should start that way.
Bring the beautification people back up. Bring them back up.
Is that working?
What? Is that working? Okay. This is.
I love.
This is the best part, right? Huh? Okay. Have a good time. Commissioner Perry has suggested that we start every meeting this way.
Yes.
There will be beautification awards coming out. Eventually, we'll all get one. The next item on the agenda is public discussion. Items not on the agenda. If there's anything that you want to address that is not on the agenda, please come forth. Howard?
I'm Howard Smith from 60 Woodward Heights, and I just wanted to talk about since the stop sign has been moved, it's been much quieter at my house. I can sit there and watch cars that'll still stop thinking it's still there. And I have seen a couple cars trying to turn off Bermuda, not realizing cross-traffic doesn't stop because they don't see that little sign. And I can see the other intersection too, and I see fewer cars running that sign than what used to run the sign where it was. And I suspect they're because they're not used to it being there yet. But overall, I'm totally happy. I don't see any speed increases in the cars. There are still those, you know, few fast cars, and there is one rider truck that just flies through there, going east usually. But other than that, everything, I think it was a good move. Thank you.
Well, that's good to hear. You realize that we will also be talking about
Yes, I do. I just wanted to
Continuing the discussions, but thank you for
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to give my viewpoint of what I've seen.
Really appreciate that, Howard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else? Okay. The next item on the agenda is the water infrastructure millage discussion. I just wanted to make a couple comments before I turn it over to Jim. First, I wanted to say how pleased I was. I opened Facebook about 6:30 tonight, and the first item was somebody looking for a notary, which means we're back in business, right? This is like the age-old question, who's a notary? Where can I find one? I've been following the discussion as much as I can. I have to put it down periodically over the last week. And I just wanted to say, I'm sorry. And I wanted to say, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, first of all, that we have to, by state mandate, replace all the lead lines and that our water mains are 100 years old and are in need of replacement. I'm sorry that much of the discussion that really started in April with the town hall was done on Zoom. It was done during a COVID pandemic. It was done when people were more excited about whether we were going to open the pool, whether we were going to have guest passes, all the numbers, how we were going to sign up, yada, yada, yada. That was kind of, that was the issue in April and kind of continued into May. So a lot of the discussion that can sometimes get generated when we're meeting in person was more or less put off the table. And I'm sorry that the literature was taken, that was put together, which was excellent in many ways, made people feel, or said that the only option that we had available was a millage. We know that there are other options. There's been a lot of discussion about other options, and we will continue to talk about other options. And I hope people, after tonight, will continue those dialogues. There's going to be a meet the candidates night tomorrow. People will be talking about it. People will be talking about it up through November 2nd, the election, which I hope everybody turns out to vote. And they'll be talking about, we'll be talking about it into next year as we prepare the budget. So a lot of discussion is going to go on. Unfortunately, it's now come to a head very recently instead of, it could have come to a head in April and May of this year. So I just wanted to throw that out, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim.
Thank you. And to add on that, we were going to start this process in April of 2020, and then the world shut down because we knew that the mandate was kicking in this year. So we're even right now still kind of behind in getting this project going because we're supposed to have lead lines replaced by the end of the year. And we've been working on that. We've started that process of replacing a few. But this was going to be something that we were going to start in April of 2020. We were going to just do a partial water rate adjustment in 2020 and begin the discussion about how we wanted to fund this. But when COVID hit and everything shut down, not only did we not want to implement a water rate increase, we waived late fees and we waived credit card charges, and we were trying to be as accommodating as possible. And it just didn't feel like the right time during all the uncertainty of COVID, especially at the beginning, when things first shut down to start talking about, hey, and by the way, we also have this huge problem that we've been working on for a few years. So that, it was a complication. In terms of the literature, yes, there was the one thing on the one fact sheet that should say without raising revenue. So mea culpa. Beyond that, we've corrected it in the online version, and we acknowledge it. I want to talk about a few things. Nothing as the discussions have continued. Just to follow up on a few of the things we've heard. With this project, there's really three different funding options. The water usage rate, the flat fee, ready-to-serve charge that's on the water bill, and then the millage. And the proposed millage, I have hybrid in there because it is a hybrid. The millage only provides partial funding. The remainder comes through the water rate. And each option in combination of this will impact each household differently. We know this, so that's part of the challenge. The three options that we've been looking at, we have the 2021 water rate, shows the ready-to-serve charge, what the combined usage rate is. The millage option would return the ready-to-serve charge back to last year's levels. We've been raising the ready-to-serve charge for the past three or four years now in anticipation of this project. So the, that's a baseline level of funding, which is coming through flat fixed charges for the project. That remains under any of these scenarios. And then the flat fee option would raise the ready-to-serve. You can see it goes to 127.75 per billing period if you fund the project entirely through that. So these are three scenarios we put together just for comparison's sake. And I think it's important to note that when you talk about the percentage of funding for the project that comes from these different sources under the scenarios. Under the millage option, 27%, so a little more than a quarter is flat fee. And then the millage would provide the other 73%. And when the ready-to-serve charge had been raised over the last three or four years, the millage proposal would fill the gap in the funding need, in the funding we need. It's important to note also that the millage is a maximum levy. The commission doesn't have to levy the entire three and a half mils. So there's flexibility to discuss what that, what that rate combination looks like. So when we talk about the millage versus the flat fee, the flat fee equalizes the dollar cost across households, and the millage equalizes the percentage increase across households. Because the millage is really a percentage basis. So every household has their baseline level of costs that they're bearing right now for utility bills and their property taxes they pay. And the millage just adds a percentage on top of that. So everyone sees an equal six and a half, 6% increase in what their bottom line is. But of course, with taxable value differences across households, that creates a different dollar cost impact. We know this. We recognize this. So the millage impacts, it costs higher taxable value, households more. Prop A limits taxable value growth. So the idea of Prop A in the 90s was to prevent taxing people out of their homes. What we've seen in Pleasant Ridge is property values have basically doubled almost in the last 10 years. So if taxes, if property taxes had doubled in the last 10 years, that's, that's a real challenge. So in the past, you would see some older, long-time residents be unable to afford property taxes and have to sell their homes. If that was the case, for us, it'd be great. The city would have enough tax revenue to do all of this without asking for a single thing. But it's a good thing for residents. But it can create disproportionate cost increases for households of similar means. One thing property taxes don't do is they don't relate to your means. You know, some older fixed income residents may have limited means, maybe, it may be harder to bear a fixed cost increase. But some long-time residents have equal means to people who just bought their house. And we know that with taxable value differences, that creates a disparity in what two different households that may be of different means have to pay. There's really nothing we can do about that, but that is the backdrop and the environment we're operating in. So the flat fee considerations, the flat fee compared to the millage increases costs for 60% of households. And it results in the highest percent increase of any option for some households. We'll look at this in a minute. So I've been trying to figure out the best way to communicate the differences here. So these are distribution charts. The X's are the average costs that all households bear. The reason they're not equal here is because under the rate option, there's funding that's provided by non-residential sources. We've been trying to compare this cost for homeowners because that's the majority of the city. But we do have some non-residential properties that pay property taxes and use water and contribute to the water fund. So that contributes to a little bit of small difference in the averages. But the blue line here is the median, so half of households pay less than $471, half of households pay more than $471 in this rate option increase. And you can see that continues for the other two options. And then the other, the box is the middle 50%, and then the lines, the whiskers, are the top 25% and bottom 25% in terms of the increase you bear. So the chart shows that the millage option creates the largest spread in terms of dollar cost for households. But when you convert it to percent increase, the millage option is the tightest in terms of percentage increase. So this really is the, gets to the crux of the question of how do you allocate these costs among households? And you can see the flat fee creates a very large percentage difference. So again, as the dollar cost differences get bigger, the percentage increases get smaller for the millage option. So what other options are there? Really, the question is how much funding from each source? How do you pull these levers in different combinations? You could adjust the usage rate, you could do the ready-to-serve charge, or you could do the millage. And a lot of the discussion is really focused on flat ready-to-serve fee versus millage rate. I think we all recognize that a high water usage rate is not really a desirable thing. So the commission could choose to levy less than the maximum millage if the millage is approved by the voters. You could do hybrid options. You could look at providing 50% of the revenue from a millage and 50% from a flat fee, and that would be about a 2.4 mil levy instead of a 3.5. Or if you wanted to do a 25% revenue source from the millage, that's a 1.2 mil levy. And then when you do those same charts, what you can see is as you increase or decrease the millage and increase the ready-to-serve charge, it starts to tighten up the gap in the spread between the upper and lower limits. And it starts to increase the spread on the percentage cost increase basis. So the question is really, at this point, it's a political one. How do you, how do we allocate these costs in a way that feels most fair to the most, most highest number of households? And the last thing I want to address, and we can talk about any of this with the comments or any kind of questions that people have. But one of the things I want to address really quickly is I was thinking about the idea of separating these projects. Let's just do the service mains now, and then we'll wait for something to happen or later to do the water mains because it's expensive. Part of the issue is, is an efficiency one. When you replace the lead service line, you have to go from the house all the way to the main. So you're digging up part of the street. You have to replace that concrete. You're doing all of that work. If you come back later to do the water main, you have to dig up the street again to replace the service lines again. The water main is on one side of the street or the other. So the side of the street that the water main is on is called the short side because it's the short run from the water main to the house. And then, of course, you have the long side run. Most of the time, a water main is moved closer to the property line in our, in our situation. And in that case, you might be able to take those short-run service lines and cut them and reattach those to the new main. But on the long side run, you can't make a lead longer. So you have to replace that public service lead again after you dig into the street again. So knowing that the public side replacement is about 26% of the total project cost, we're going to bear at least 13% of that total project cost again. We're going to do all of that concrete restoration again. We have the design and contract administration and inspection costs again if you separate these projects out to wait to do the water main. So there is, there is a cost to waiting to do this, not to mention the fact that we don't know how long our water distribution system is going to remain serviceable. I think, you know, one of the things that if, you know, we really got into would be to do some actual flow testing to, on a, you know, on a day in the summertime to open up two mains and see what happens in the city. Because we know when we do a flow test, we've had pressure cratering on Elm Park. So that's, that's just an indication that we're not healthy. You can't see it. It's like when you get plaque buildup in your arteries. You can't see it until something bad happens. So I just wanted to make those points about separating the projects out. And with that.
Okay, now we're going to open it up for questions. If you will come to the microphone and give your name and address. And then we're going to try, depending on the number, try to keep it, keep your comments to about three minutes if you can. And we will go through everybody who has something to say. So who wants to start?
I have something to say.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Katie Schmear from 29 Wellesley. Number one, I wanted to thank you for this presentation. I know I will be spending time over the next couple days really reading it because I think it provides a lot of good information. And I also wanted to say, and I did put this on Facebook, but I know a lot of people aren't on Facebook, that whatever we ultimately decide as a city, I think we should really do a citizens advisory committee, whether the millage passes or fails, that allows people, whatever happens, to be able to put their input in. And a committee that really represents our city. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
Jay Ahmed from 92 Kensington. I doubt I'll get through my questions in three minutes, but first a comment. Thanks to everyone here for doing what the work was required to come to this decision. I recognize, and I'm not here to disparage or grandstand, that this was a Hobson's choice, that there's no good solution that everyone was going to be happy with. But I do have questions about where we are currently. And the first question is, if the millage passes, does the immediate tax increase does the immediate tax increase kick in right now? Or, what happens until it does?
Nothing happens. The, the millage would be, would start to be assessed with your summer twenty-twenty-two taxes. And that millage rate would be set by the city commission after the budget-public hearing, which usually occurs in June of each year.
So, is the water usage rate?
The water usage rate.
Funding still going to apply?
Until June, until June thirty, twenty-twenty-two. And the water usage rate will be set at the same time as the budget is adopted and millage rate's set.
Okay. So, first question then is, why isn't the flat fee the backup funding plan rather than the usage rate if, as you've just said, the usage rate is probably the worst way to fund this?
The usage rate was increased slightly. So, in the, under the usage rate scenario, about seventy percent of the funding is flat fee and thirty percent is usage. And the reason is because we modeled it out. And that flattens that percentage increase curve a little bit. When you saw those charts and the percentage increase on all of the households in the city, that blended model kept it to about a thirty-five percent increase on the total annual utility bill for most everybody. So that's why the blended model was chosen.
So is there still the possibility that we could go to a flat rate if the millage passes and that can fund it through the time that the millage kicks in?
I don't know that we can change water rates in the middle of the year.
I think you mentioned at the open house that it, it was possible for the commission to have voted on a flat rate without the need for a millage. Does the commission agree with that? And I'm not asking, trying to pit people against each other. I just want to make sure I have the correct information. Could the commission have simply passed this on their own, doing a flat rate without the need for this millage?
Sure.
Okay, was that considered?
It was, Mayor. Yeah, I think amongst all the options, it was part of the, at least for myself, a part of the consideration. Flat fee, some sort of blend to benefit all kinds of households. And then a, a complete millage. And that's not where we ended up. We have now this, this suggestion where we have a millage and a ready-to-serve charge.
Okay. So at some point, the commission considered having a flat rate and decided the best way to go was the millage plus what you have from the water bill?
That's what we voted on, yes.
Okay. And then just a, a last comment, which is, and I think there's some agreement on this, that when you have no choice in terms of your funding, like you do with education or police, when you have to use them, it's either millage or you don't get what you need. Then obviously, millage is, is the only option. And you put it for an up or down vote. In this instance, it, it's not the only method. And I think it's really important that people know that. And I appreciate the comment that the literature that was put out was not accurate. Because the feeling that people are left with, if they're looking at this literature that has been put out, it's either you vote for a millage or, guess what, we can't get it funded or it's going to be your usage rates. And I look forward to literature being published. I haven't seen the online site if that's been changed. But I, I really think there should be some sort of literature that's put out to help people understand that that was an error. But second, that it's, it's a flawed method of funding fundamentally because it doesn't test on means. If you want to test on means, in other words, the people who have more means pay more and the people who have less means pay less, we can have that policy discussion. But this is not it. Because of the Headley Amendment, you don't have it on means. You have very wealthy homeowners who've lived in their homes for years and years and years who will pay less than someone who just bought five years ago and has a house value half of what those people do. That is completely inequitable and it's regressive. It is, I've said this before, you might as well flip a coin for each person and say, you pay more, you pay less. Or, for every even-numbered house, you pay more. For every hot, odd number, you pay less. That's basically what you're doing. You're choosing longtime homeowner over short-time homeowner, which has created, unfortunately, I fear, this antagonism now in the community between longtime residents and people who haven't had the good fortune to own their home for ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years. And it's because of that, that randomness in terms of who pays more and who pays less. It's not based upon your means, your wealth, or anything like that. It's simply based on the random statistic of how long have you lived in your house? That is not a fair way to fund things. Is the flat rate the best way? I don't know. I know it's the fairest way. Who here is going to come up and say, hey, it's not fair that I pay as much as my neighbor? No one's going to object to that. That's straight fairness. Like when I, I used this example before, Jim's probably tired of hearing it. But if I go to Kroger and I buy a gallon of milk, I don't pay less or more depending how long I've lived in my home. I pay the same as everyone else. And I really think that regardless of what happens with the millage, whether it passes or whether it fails, I would urge this commission, and Kurt, I know you're stepping down and you've done yeoman's job. But this commission and the people who will be joining you, I really, really hope you sit down and consider what is happening to this community because of this millage. That people are looking at it like, I can't afford to stay in my home. Who's going to buy my home with this amount of property tax? And if there can be some sort of get-together, I think, it was just proposed, that we have a citizens' commission talk about, is this the best way forward? Even if it passes, please, I would urge you, even if it passes, to say, is this the best use of the citizens of Pleasant Ridge money to take a disproportionate and exponential amount from the new residents to fund this project for essentially the older residents? It's robbing Peter to pay Paul. And I think it's disproportionate, inequitable, and not the way we should fund this historic massive project. So, that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Jay. No, I think you've brought up, you have brought up a lot of issues that people are going to be thinking about as they go. Just one thing I wanted to say is that not all people will go to Krogers to buy their milk. They may have to go to, to some, to Aldi's or someplace else because they don't want to pay Kroger prices.
Yeah, and they can shop around. Here though, Kurt, we don't have that choice.
You could shop through your house.
And just to give my perspective, if I think about how people pay for everything, the roads, the pool, this building, staff, everything, it is primarily based on state equalized value. And so, that was a lot of what went into my thinking around the millage, around this infrastructure piece. It's paying for it in practically the same way that we pay for just about everything else in town. And in fact, how most people pay for just about everything in any town. So, I understand your position, but your position is bigger than water infrastructure. If you believe that the water infrastructure shouldn't be the way that everything else is paid, then why? And what's driving that, that decision path? It isn't to say that it shouldn't be or should be. It's just, when I look at it, I see how we pay for taxes for everything. Majority of it is based on state equalized value. It makes sense to me that some portion of this is based on state equalized value because that's how my house is taxed. And, and some portion of it, we've already decided that some portion of it wouldn't be because the ready-to-serve piece would remain. And we do have that flexibility to decide how much of each would if the millage passes. We can dial one up, dial one down. But then the end of the day, it's about eight-hundred bucks a house per year and it's an unfortunate amount of money, however we split it up. But that's what it is to get the water, to get the water mains fixed. The other thing I'll say is, I'm very much against holding off on maintenance that we know needs to be done.
I agree with that.
Waiting to do something that we know needs to be done means that it will just be more expensive later. It could be a water main and a service line and a road and more road because something caved in. It could be something that we want to avoid happening. And as a city, we have tended to take care of our maintenance and made that a priority. It's something that I had hoped we'd continue to do moving forward. And then the last thing I'll say is, because there was so much chatter on Facebook and I'm literally a five-to-ten-minute-a-day Facebook kind of person. Facebook is open, but it is not an open meeting. So there's only so much that we can talk about on Facebook. If you raise comments on Facebook, there's only so much that we can comment back because it really has to happen in an open meeting. We can't make decisions on Facebook. I have to actually look to see who else has been on Facebook before I comment just to make sure that we're not creating a situation. So, I do encourage everyone to come to meetings. Give yourself five to ten minutes a month to go onto the website to see. If we're doing something that seems weird to you, it's worth, it's worth the five-to-ten minutes a month to go on the website. Come see us to make sure that it's visible. I agree with Kurt, by the way. This has been such a weird year that even though we have communicated a lot, I don't know how much is enough in this year because we were consuming so much information this year in all realms. And it's just been grabbing people's attention and getting people to see this was difficult.
No, I get it. And I, again, I don't want to monopolize people's times, but just briefly to, to respond to that notion, because I've heard this before, that, well, it's the way that you funded other things. But you fund other things, the things that you mentioned, because you don't have a choice. You have to rely on a millage. And it's not good enough for me, especially for this massive historic project, to say, well, we've relied on this flawed crappy way to fund things in the past where we disproportionately burdened new homeowners and so that's the way we're going to fund this. Because it was crappy before, but you had no choice, is a lousy means to say, well, let's just do it this way. Especially when you have an alternative that is staring you in the face that is equitable and fair and no one could conceivably come to you and say, I don't like that I have to pay as much as everyone else.
And we have exercised it.
You have a choice.
And we have exercised it.
Yes, you did.
Mayor.
Thanks. Oh, yes.
I'm sorry. If I could report, thank, thank you for, for speaking your mind too, Mr. Ahmed. Appreciate it. And just a little insight to, I guess, how I came to the blend that we did was the fear of raising water rates, which we all acknowledge is probably not ideal. I was looking at a way to somehow bake it into the, the fees not being seen. So that came, the mortgage thing came up. And just if we could bake this into a mortgage payment, that, that's kind of where my, my mind was to kind of out of sight, out of mind and just help budget it that way versus seeing that huge water bill every month and being disengaged with that. So, that was just a little bit of my insight to it. And I'm, I'm not opposed to having discussions around, you know, pulling the levers as we were talking about, absolutely. So I appreciate you coming and speaking. Yep. Yes, thank you.
Hi, Dan Riley at Thirty Oakdale. I, I just wanted a couple of clarifications. Because I'll be honest with you, the amount of chatter in the social media space and some of the insinuations and misinformation and just randomness, it, it's, it's a bit taxing. So, just to be clear, the suggestion of a flat fee, you said several times that it wouldn't, it'd be equitable, no one would complain. So, would that be a flat fee per square foot? A flat fee based on the Zillow value of your house? Or someone in a nine-hundred-square-foot bungalow would pay the same as I would? Okay. So that's not equitable and that's a bit bizarre. I know everybody doesn't love the Headley Amendment and the state equalized value. But is there a suggestion from people who oppose the millage on the table to use appraised value of the houses? Like, I, I haven't heard that. So, that would, that would be equitable. And I don't want to hear means testing in, you know, conversations in, in a city like this. It's absurd. It's the, you know, the reason why we're holding up an infrastructure bill in Congress. And I just think, to Brett's point, there is a system in place. This is a major infrastructure project. I get there's different ways. I appreciate a hybrid look. I don't really have a huge horse in this race. I've been here like nine years, not twenty-five. And the whole means discussion is, is really irrelevant. I, I, I think some people are going to be, you know, demolished by a flat fee. Some people will benefit from a fee based on a millage and state equalized value. But I also, you know, there's a lot of insinuations out in, in the, the social media space. And there's a lot of Trojan horses for people's political beliefs and, and beliefs about how economics and taxes should be applied. And, and it's stirring up things that have nothing to do with it. So I'd, I'd love to see more transparency. Frankly, if someone said, hey, this sucks because I just moved and I went from a smaller house to a bigger house and I got hit with the increase. But I also see intelligent people on social media saying, oh my God, I just got my first tax bill. It's twice as much as the people I bought it from. What happened? In which case, I scratch my head and wonder where they've been, who sold them their house, who their mortgage broker was. But that's very real. It happens all the time. So, I, I'm, I'm flummoxed a bit. Like, because I don't understand how a flat fee across every homeowner, regardless of the size of their property, the value, what they pay in property taxes, would be equitable. So, that's just my two cents.
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Next.
I just wanted a clarification. When you say flat fee, and I know he was just saying on square footage of house, I've had other properties to where they flat fee based on your road frontage for the inner, you know, like for street repairs and stuff, repaving. And you pay fifty percent of the value, so it's...
So, I, I just want to address something. There, there's more uncertainty. And part of this relates to the fact that we have to replace lead service lines. And the state letting copper rules say that we have to do that at public cost. And one of the things that I, that I had the city attorney look into is, okay, well, what about people who have a copper service line? What about people, you know, who, because there's, there's different situations. And his response is, you can't create different classes of user under a, under a water usage rate. So everyone has to pay the same rate. You can't have classes.
Not based on your frontage to pay for the repairs.
Right. So talking about, okay, well, we're going to, everyone's frontage or the length of your service line or the square footage of, you know, the, of your house or your assessed value versus your taxable value. All these things start to get a little problematic. Because of that lead and copper rule, it says at public cost. And, and all of the rate-setting lawsuits that are out there.
Okay, the answer is my question.
I get it. Those make, those make common sense. You know, it's, it's a common sense way to try to find a proportionality between cost and benefit and everything else. But, common sense doesn't always come into play with the rules that we have to operate under at local government level.
And one more thing I just want to say is, go vote. Vote on the millage. Vote on it if you don't want it, or if you do, vote.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
I do. Thank you.
I said I wasn't going to speak, but here I am. Kristi Hand, I am at Eight Oxford Boulevard. And Brett, I so agree with you with the SEV being the way that we pay for everything. And what feels different to me in this situation is the mandated of the lead service lines. So that portion, I don't, I don't, I agree, James, like, you do the projects together, but they seem, it, it seems like maybe they could be funded differently. Because the lead service line replacement is mandated. It's mandated that I pay less than my neighbor. It's mandated that I pay more than my neighbor. If we're not supposed to be able to create different classes of people paying, it's kind of what is happening with the millage. That's why I would love to see that portion, not just the, not just the private portion, but all of the lead service replacement be equally distributed among all residents and businesses in Pleasant Ridge. And maybe then the millage for the, the water mains. It's something about like the mandate from the state, which I'm happy that's happening. I want clean, healthy water for everybody. But, the mandate that we all have to pay something different feels weird. And I would love to pay the same price as my neighbor to have us all have that healthy drinking water access to our homes. So I don't know. That's just where I come from and where it feels odd to me. And that's why I've been vocal in this. So, yeah, there's my two cents. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. It's good to be back. Jay Foreman, Sixty Oakdale.
Nice to see you, Jay.
Looks a little different since last time. I just wanted to comment on the one point about the citizens advisory committee. As we know, we use that in the past. It worked very well. I think that's a really good suggestion for moving forward. Again, however this millage pass, passes or doesn't pass, as Katie suggested. I think that should be like order number one or priority number one, is find people. As we see here, we all have different opinions. We all have different ways we think this could work out. I, I want this piece, I want that piece. We all have this. We could all bring that together, everyone. Who has a very different opinion, someone on this end, this end, we all come together and work something out together. I think it couldn't be better. And yes, it takes more time and it can be frustrating and, and, but I think it also gives us skin in the game. It gives us the ability to be part of the process, much more than maybe just coming once a month here or posting on Facebook. We get the back-and-forth questions from Jim or other city staff. You know, again, I have a little more background on it than maybe some other residents just because we did this before. But, I thought it was a great experience. So I would like to look at that in the future here for, for this exact matter.
And I agree with it. I mean, I think that residents are much read, more ready to listen to a group of residents who have come to that kind of decision-making and they can explain it themselves. And I know the first time... And I know the first time around was, was very successful.
And then for everyone else's understanding, you know, this group would give a recommendation then to the city commission. And then the commission would decide if they want to pursue that path or, or not. But they better pursue that path.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
Hi, Audrey Tedford, 34 Oakland Park Boulevard. First time, long time. So I am one of the new-ish residents. Um, so I pay a high tax amount. I knew that moving into the community that I would. And that part of the benefit of living here was the pool and the rec center, yada, yada. That's all paid by SEV. I do think that this is a different situation. Um, I think personally that a flat fee is fair, that a 900 square foot bungalow who utilizes a water main the same amount that I do in my 4,000 square foot home is the same thing. And I do think, along with a previous gentleman, that taxing based on SEV in, in this situation is a regressive tax. So that's just my opinion. I would definitely agree with the Citizens Advisory Committee path. I think it's fair. I think it allows people to have their say and provide some additional input to the process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who, yes, please.
Okay, I wasn't good talking.
I already wrote to Jim and I appreciate your response, but my, my main thing was, my main issue is I think we need to have more discussions with the state of Michigan. Um, which I know, you know, that's not always ideal, but I feel like Pleasant Ridge is in such a unique situation because we are a teeny tiny city that is historic. Essentially, the entire city, every street in this, in this area is historic. So I understand that this is a mandate, but I also believe that we can come to the table with people at the state level. I've already reached out to, to representatives and to Robert Wittenberg for some more guidance on who to talk to. And I know Jim is also in, you know, looking to get additional funding. But the point is, I just think a 30-year tax mill is a long time. It's a long commitment. And it does impact eventually the way that I go to sell my house. Right now, the market is hot. If I sold tomorrow, it wouldn't make a difference. I agree. But I'm not selling tomorrow. I may sell in 10 years and who knows what will happen. 30 years is a long time for a mill. And I just think the water meeting and all of the people who have been posting and some of it has been chaotic, but others is just people speaking their, you know, be, being, participating in civics, you know? I just feel like it's, um, there's room for pause, you know? And, and I, I don't think anybody has ill intent ever on this commission. I thank each one of you for your time. It is not easy, but I just hope that we can, you know, just consider, um, some more options. I'm, I'm hopeful at the state level and maybe, maybe even at the federal level that something will, you know, come in to help cities like us in very unique spots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We all are.
Yeah, no kidding.
If you've got.
But we need to push for it. We need to push for it. It's not gonna just happen. We have to write, you know, higher than city commission, you know, city commission.
I agree.
I do have a quick question. The flat rate.
Please, can you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You have to come up. Sorry.
I'm Kristen, uh, 9 Woodward Heights. I'm a very new resident. I've only been here for three years. Um, so this is kind of concerning because again, going into buying this house, I knew that the taxes were high, but we were like, we can make it work. We love the city. Just came from Ferndale, like two miles away. Um, but now that the taxes are increasing even more, it's like, ah, I mean, I'm like 30, so I don't have all my money under my belt yet. So it is kind of concerning. Um, so I'm just trying to look at 30 years. That's a long time. I don't know if I'll be here for 30 years. So I won't see it beyond that. So this flat rate, how long would that last for? Is that 30 years? Is that?
Incorrect. It would be 30 years.
Okay.
Let me put your mind at ease, though.
Yeah.
Your increase under the current water rates would be $443. Your increase under the millage would be $483 a year and your flat fee would be $526.
So is that per year? Is that per bill? Because my bill this month was like double.
Right. Because this is always, this is always the high.
I am never watering my grass ever again.
Don't do that.
I'm telling you. All my flowers will die.
We get that, we get that in a regular year, even without the rate increase. So, yeah.
So the millage would only increase it by slight?
For you.
For me personally.
Because every, like I say, the calculus is different.
The calculus is, is different for every house.
Okay.
And the spread between the three options was like $80 or something.
Right.
Okay.
For you.
For me personally.
Right. It's, no, no one wants to.
For my broke 30-year-old self.
They'll increase with the rate of inflation like they do now. No. It's been, that, that's the maximum. It can go up. In recent years, it's gone up anywhere between 0.8 and 2.1% a year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, guys. Alex Lenka, 16 Millington. Uh, Jim, one last question really, um, about the data and that's good segue from the last question. Uh, but in the information you provided me previously, uh, on that box and whisker chart, it didn't correlate. So, um, 121 was the low, 1788 was the high. On the graph just presented, 1,100 something was the high. I'm just curious. I mean, I want to make sure we're using accurate data and as we're.
The data's accurate. Outliers removed from those charts.
So which one is the outlier?
The outlier was, I think 1,800 is the highest increase under the millage in the entire city. But they're in between that, it's a, the statistical, it just, it was the Excel box and whisker chart and I excluded.
So the box and whisker excluded some outliers.
Excluded about, I think it was eight or nine outliers, which were above that, whatever was the top line.
Okay.
And there were outliers under all the scenarios.
That's, were there any outliers on the low end?
I believe on some of the scenarios. I.
Okay. Cause I saw the 121. I did not see, okay. No, that clarifies it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Any other comments?
Tom Wilkinson, 130 Maplefield. I just, um, it's been obviously a very intense discussion since the, um, since the town hall and I think it's good. Um, you know, like, like a lot of people, I kind of wish we had been having this discussion in May, but COVID upended a lot of things in all of our lives. So here we are. I just wanted to compliment the commission and Jim for the updated data and everybody who spoke for, you know, really having their heart and their mind in this. And that's why we live, we've lived here for 33 years and that's why we're staying here. And so just thank you, everybody.
Can I just say one thing? I just want to say when we did this, um, I think who said it, that it's, that it's not, it was not an easy decision. And, and we sat in a room and we talked about, I mean, it's a totally unfortunate situation to begin with. I mean, we tried to come up with the best plan, but our, right, we brought it to you and now it's your job to ask the questions and make decisions, right?
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Mayor.
Oh, go ahead. I also want to thank everyone for coming. I mean, this is like democracy, you know, doc, democracy is messy and it is really important. And it's been so helpful. I want to thank everyone for engaging in all this. At, you know, I, I do apologize because I thought we were doing a very good job of communicating early on. Like when, when we had the town hall and then I really loved, you know, not everybody's on Facebook, but the Facebook feed where, you know, the city manager would go on and answer questions, I thought was really effective early on. So even though it has taken us a while to sort of get to this point where everyone is feeling more focused and, you know, really diving into the numbers. I'm really glad everybody's here and, um, and out there on Facebook or, you know, emailing Jim and everyone. And we're just looking forward to continuing this conversation. So thank you.
And, uh, vote on November 2nd. It's not November 2nd yet. So please bring your questions to us. So if you still have questions about what the millage means, what it means that the ready to surcharge remains and that there is a hybrid model, please write to us and let us know so that we can get that information out to everybody. We just want to make sure you make an informed decision, however you vote. Uh, and, um, I do appreciate everyone that came tonight and everyone that's added questions.
Just one final thing. The, the data, we're packaging that. That'll be available, the charts, the background analysis. We're, we do have the table for everyone's house. We're not releasing this publicly. Um, but you can call or email. Call City Hall or email me and we'll get you your, uh, your household expected impact. We just don't want to put everybody's business out.
Jim, are you gonna make that, that people aware publicly? Cause I think it would be pretty helpful if, if anyone could call or look online and see what the three scenarios mean to them.
So.
People maybe, you know, arguing over $30 and not really.
Right. So we're not gonna, we're not gonna push it out online.
Not everybody, but will you push out the, the information is available?
Yeah. Yes.
So, thank you for saying that. And if everybody can sort of share with their neighbors that this information's available. Because, you know, we have a lot of neighbors who aren't on Facebook. It seems like we're all on there, but we're not. And so, you know, share with everybody that they can call City Hall, they can email and get this information. Cause it is a great, um, you know, it's, it's a very solid, you know, just helpful piece for everybody.
Alex Lenka, 16 Millington. Would we be able to get a sanitized list? I think this is something I asked for, but if that table is available, can we publish the sanitized list without address? So you can't identify.
To what?
Just, just so people can see the full spread.
That's, yeah, that's not my decision.
Okay. Whose decision? Can we?
It's the commission.
Yeah. We'll take it on.
And just as background, you know, we, we looked at the list. We've had a lot of debate about whether to put the list out or not. Uh, I'd mentioned it to a couple of people on Saturday and, and it just felt weird disclosing water rates and other things for how much or little water people use. You see that, and it isn't obvious whose house it is, even when you take the addresses off. It just feels weird. And that's, uh, the only reason. But we do encourage everyone to, uh, ask questions about their home. And we can describe other homes, but not specifically just because it, it feels a bit strange. It's all publicly available information, but it feels weird to see it on a list and we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
And I, and I wanted to add one thing. There was some, one of the comments during one of the streams, it could have been multiple comments. The question about people may have already, uh, sent in their absentee ballot. And this discussion has gone on since that time and maybe they've got a little more information. Maybe they've come to a different decision. You can come into City Hall and spoil your ballot and get a new one. So if you have submitted an absentee ballot and you want to change anything on there, you can come. The ballots are not, um, counted until after, uh, election, after the polls close. So, um, you have that time, right?
They're counted when the polls open.
When the polls open. Okay.
You have until 4:00 PM to spoil you. I apologize.
Nope, sorry.
You have until 4:00 PM to spoil you your ballot on Monday.
Okay.
And then the ballots will be delivered to the precinct for processing.
Okay. Good. So up until the day before. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. We will move on. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to governmental reports. I think Chief Robinson.
She had.
Did she leave?
She had to leave.
Okay.
She really didn't.
She said she had a long meeting in Ferndale last night, so.
I'll come up and just briefly. Evening, everybody. Uh, Chief Robinson had to leave. She brought a sheet with just the fire runs to Pleasant Ridge for the month of September. About eight or 10. Um, but many of them are carbon monoxide runs. So she wanted me to reiterate that with, um, cooler weather coming and your furnace firing up the furnace and everything. Test it first. Make sure your batteries are good and your CO detectors and things. Because I know I've been on a couple of calls already too where it seemed like the CO detector was faulty. There was no carbon monoxide in the house and stuff. So, and these are brand name, good ones that are either hardwired or the battery ones. So she wanted to reiterate just to make sure for safety for everybody, um, check that because the cooler weather's coming. So that's really all she had.
Thank you. Chief Nowack.
Okay. Good evening, everybody.
There he is. Good evening.
I really only had a couple, real quick, uh, Halloween, uh, I know it's gonna be addressed, but since I'm here. I think five to eight, we recommend. If you don't want to participate because of COVID or you don't feel safe, things like that. You know, Pleasant Ridge always gets hit hard because, you know, I would come here, everybody gives out giant candy bars and everything too. So it's one of the primo cities to come for trick or treating. Always has been. But, um, five to eight, we tell people don't follow in the cars and things like that. But a lot of people, you know, are a little bit turned out because of COVID or whatever, knowing if they're gonna participate. Some people leave the bowls at the thing and go on the honor system. That's it. And then leaves, we're having, uh, leaves in the street that I know will be touched on. It's not time to blow your leaves into the street yet. Uh, I don't remember. It's October 30th, 30th. So the code enforcement officer is out there. He did numerous ones today advising people. I know a lot of people have lawn services. The thing, but tell your, it's your responsibility, not the lawn service. If they're blowing out in the street, you're responsible for getting them out because it caused a problem until October 30th. So that's all I really have.
Thank you.
Any questions for Chief?
Thanks, Chief.
No Halloween questions or anything? Thank you. Okay. Next, we go to City Commission Liaison Reports and we'll start with Commissioner Perry, the Planning DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the Planning Commission and DDA did not meet, um, has not met since our last meeting. But, uh, they will be meeting on Monday, October 25th, um, 7:00 PM right here. So I hope you can join us, everybody. And, um, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Uh, hi, everyone. Um, nothing much to report for this meeting for the Historical Commission. Uh, stay tuned. If you own a hundred-year home, uh, you may receive a letter or some other communication that we're still looking for people that might still need the tile for their home. And, uh, we'll have another meeting in a, in a month. Thanks very much.
There you go. Been and now? You want to talk about?
Yes, we're actually, it's a good point. We're so close.
I can't let him get away.
He can't let me go away.
Can't, no.
So, um, we're at the point now where, actually, this is a good point. I'm glad you mentioned it.
Not in later.
I know. So, uh, uh, all of the text is done. We're inserting the pictures. Um, uh, some final editing. We've chosen a book format, uh, that we like. And so it's, uh, we're hoping to get this out by the end of the year to everyone. Um, the challenge that we're seeing is that some of the pictures we have are old and there are some pages that we'd actually surprise. And some of the, some of them are not of high resolution. So we'd actually like to find some really nice high resolution pictures of certain ages or maybe they started as eight and a half by elevens to add pages of photos to the book. And feel free to reach out to me directly if you have any pictures that might, uh, that you might think would fit and have some historical significance to the city. It might just be a picture of a person or it might be a very pretty moment in the city. It doesn't really matter. We'll find the place to put it in. And that would be very helpful. And then we'll finish the packaging of it and get it printed. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wall, Recreation Commission.
Um, first of all, I want to give a shout out to the, um, Ferndale Orchestra. They came to the auction and they played for a couple hours and it was really wonderful. It was very cool. So that was very much appreciated. Um, Halloween movie at Gaines World this Friday, 7:00 PM, fun for the whole family. Don't forget to bring your long chair Beetlejuice blanket and snacks. Movie will be shown at the Dut, the Dead End of Maywood. That was dark. We also have a mom-to-mom sale on Saturday, um, the 16th, the Saturday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. $15 for one table, 25 for two table, two tables. Um, whether you're looking to buy or sell gently used toys, clothes, books, um, it's a cool thing if you have kids or you know somebody who has kids. It's a good way to score some good deals. Um, shopping admission's a dollar. Um, Teen Trip to Cedar Point Saturday, this Saturday too. A lot going on this weekend. 7:15 they're leaving to 1:00 AM. It's like a bender.
Wow.
$85.
Favorite, isn't it, Strony? We love that.
$85 for residents. Non-residents can come as well, $95. They must be in seventh grade or older. Um, 50-plus day club day trips. Stahl's Auto Collection, um, in lunch. I don't know, what is Stahl's Auto Collection?
It's a great car museum.
I knew you would know.
Vintage cars, jazz, music collection.
Oh, cool. Okay. So it's 10:30 AM to 3:30. The cost is $8 and lunch is on your own. It was crea, I guess I should have run farther. Stahl's Automotive Foundation was created to build an appreciation for history. Um, Miss Mary's and Pete's too, and the anatomy of a dead museum.
Wow.
Um, October twenty eighth, eleven fifteen to two P M., sixteen dollars. Do you want to elaborate on what that is?
All death, all things related to death.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Timely.
It's very interesting, it's in Mount Clemens.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't even have a website.
That's how dark it is.
And you found it.
Third annual Halloween house decorating contest. Share your wicked ways and talents. Outboo your neighbors, uh, by entering the haunted house decorating contest. The categories are creepiest skeleton award, um, best decorated pumpkins, um, scariest, judges' favorite. And they're decided all by the, the, of course, the winners will be decided by judges, it makes sense. And they're judged, the P R rec commission is judging. Just email the picture of your decorated home and address to Greg at G Cowback at cityofpleasantridge.org by October twenty first. Trick or treating, we already talked about it, five to eight. Um, sign up for your flu shot Thursday, November fourth, ten A M. to two P M. at the rec center. Sponsored by Walgreens in the city, limited number of shots available. Um, you have to pre-register, um, it's a cool thing to co- just come up here. I'd, and, you know, I've given blood and I'm sure, very convenient, nice experience. Um, register is open for yoga beginning the third of, um, November and holiday arrangement workshop, register. Thank you, Shawnee.
Well done.
Wow.
Come on, now.
That's like, yeah, that was, that was a mouthful.
You're good. Commissioner Budnick, Ferndale Public Schools and the Huntington Woods Library Board.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wait, before you go, can I say one thing?
You can.
I think now would be a good time to say this. Um, this is my last commission meeting and I just want to say how wonderful it's been working with Shawnee and Greg and the whole. Uh, I've worked with them for the whole, that's been my specialty for the whole time I've been here. And it's just been the most wonderful experience. Um, and we've done a lot of good things together and I'm just really gonna miss you.
Like you're leaving town.
That'd be wishful thinking. I would bring it back down. I just didn't want her to cry.
Sorry that you were so rudely interrupting.
I know who I'm sitting next to. And I'm gonna miss her too.
Yeah.
Um, well, on the recreation side, all things kids, yeah, great job on Sunday to the rec commission. And, you know, our rec team, that was awesome. Great time.
Glad you enjoyed yourself.
Oh, we did, thank you.
You're good.
Yeah. Uh, we'll start with Ferndale Schools. And this kind of ties into, uh, Commissioner Scott's deal with things turning a hundred years old. Uh, the Roosevelt Building, Ferndale Lower is turning a hundred. Did, did they get a plaque?
No.
Okay. I had to ask, I'm obligated to.
Half was in P R, how about half a plaque?
Uh, so everyone's invited, it's October twenty second at six o'clock. There will be building tours, uh, you can reminisce with friends and neighbors. Enjoy refreshments outdoors. And this is at Ferndale Lower, of course, at twenty-six ten Pine Crest in Ferndale. And, uh, some more news, uh, with Ferndale Schools. Uh, they had their homecoming a few weeks back. Student council kind of helps organize that, so it's a great way for the council to get their hands into something and organizing, which is neat to hear about. Um, in-person school has been going fairly well, from my understanding, so that's great to hear. A little bit about a program that I found to be, uh, pretty impactful, their M H S A A has a program called Be Nice. And they had, they had two, uh, teachers, one was a coach, speak about, um, some specifics and how this program has impacted students at the school. The one that was really impactful was the head football coach, Eric Royal. It's just, um, it's teachers and staff looking out for kids and really looking beyond just them playing sports or, or, you know, being their teacher. It's looking at them at home and, and really checking in. Eric offered, um, a football player a ride home. He noticed that he was walking, offered him a ride home. And he had him drop him off at a park. And, uh, the coach Royal was like, what, why, why am I dropping you off at a park? And after digging a little bit, he found out that he was, he was living in a shelter downtown with his family. And so upon uncovering this, um, he went to some folks at Ferndale and, and they were able to figure out some living arrangements for them with some, some government help and, and got them situated closer to school.
That is great.
It was such a touching story to hear, just, you know, this coach talking about his player and this kid was on time every day. And what a, what a, what an amazing story to hear, so. Um, that is the Be Nice program. Um, for our numbers and data-driven gurus at the end of the desk here, uh, enrollment is up in the elementary, slightly down in middle school and pretty steady in high school. Um, to be exact, three thousand one hundred and twenty total students in the district right now, which, uh, according to Bill Good is a strong position for the district. Because last year dipped below twenty-nine fifty, so up, a couple hundred students, so feeling pretty good about where they are. Uh, that's all for Ferndale Schools. And we will go to the Huntington Woods Library Report. Brought to us by Jay's lovely wife and her friend Stacy. Boo, it's October. And she wanted, she says she wants to hear me say this out loud. So that, there's the boo. Seriously, first off, we thanks Chris immensely for being our professional proxy. You're welcome. Uh, fun online storytimes for all ages continue on Monday and Wednesday mornings at eleven and Wednesday afternoons at one o'clock. There is also a cozy pajama storytime on Thursdays at six thirty P M. in Scotia Park. Wacky Science Wednesday continues on October thirteenth and twenty-seventh at four P M. With algae art and glowing slime just in time for Halloween. October twenty-third is Super Saturday where you can make your own fun craft project. All ages are welcome. And last, adult programming continues to offer the popular book discussion group, the Film Discussion, Discussion Series with Dr. Tara Hayes, where this month will focus on the movie Once Upon a Time in America. And the speaker series features Ms. Valerie Marvin, historian and curator of the Michigan State Capitol with Women of the Michigan State Capitol. To sign up for events, go to Huntington Woods Library webpage at HuntingtonWoodsL I B dot org or give them a buzz at two four eight five four three ninety-seven twenty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to give, uh, Commissioner Scott a chance just to mention some of the work he's doing at Ferndale.
Yes, the robotics teams are up and running this year, so, yes. Uh, I joined the sixth to eighth grade team and, uh.
That's awesome.
They're, I mean, actually, I don't remember being.
Ringer.
I don't remember, uh, me being that smart in sixth grade, you know, they're just really good kids. And, uh, uh, the, the, uh, the championship or the tournament is designed around, uh, warehousing and the words that they're using for sixth graders, I would never have chosen, but they're all picking it up. They're designing ways to move, uh, robots around to, uh, to compete with each other and actually work as teams together to, uh, to move, uh, little rubber ducks this time, that's actually the challenge for this year.
That's cute.
And, uh, so you'll hear more about it as the year goes on. And, uh, it'll be, it's just a fun thing to see the kids, uh, learn and how, learn how to work together and, um.
It's a whole supply chain kind of thing.
It's literally a supply chain for sixth graders, it's really bizarre.
Excellent.
And, uh, yeah, you'll hear more.
Cool.
Excellent. Thank you.
Commissioner Scott, I heard your team is doing stuff to help pull lead lines through and you.
That's right.
Too soon.
Too soon.
Rubber ducks. Way too soon.
Bring that back next month.
You got it.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of the consent agenda. I'm just gonna ask if there's a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
I thought you had that.
Oh, right, well, this was easy. Um, are there any discussions, any items? May we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes. Motion carries. Next item is an update on the segregated capital assets fund, Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund or S C A F R S R F update.
It's very cool.
Indeed.
The commission will remember this is something that we created back in twenty fifteen, uh, using a provision in state law. It's basically, uh, an endowment fund for parks and recreation, um, activities in the city. And we have the three point two million total overall S C A F, which was the settlement money received from the, uh, I six nine six settlement in the nineties. And per the, um, provision in state law, you can invest, uh, in a Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund under the pension fund rules, which are much more liberal in terms of what you can invest in. S C A F has to be invested in basically governmental, uh, excess funds, which is very, very safe and very, very liquid. Things like money market CDs. It doesn't, it hasn't been returning anything really since the, the recession. Um, so this is a way of reporting out on the progress and, uh, status of the fund. We'd like to do this, uh, periodically back to the city commission. We have the city investment committee, which, uh, consists of Brett, myself, Amy, former mayor Castelli, uh, who, uh, was here when the S C A F was created. So, um, he's, he's excellent to have on that committee helping oversee it still. You can see what the returns are, the blue line is the Parks and Revenue Fund. And the, uh, orange line is what it would have returned if that had been remained, uh, invested in S C A F. And as you can see, obviously there's dips in, uh, peaks and valleys. But overall, uh, the, we're sitting right now at about two point eight five million in, uh, the Parks and, uh, Parks and Recreation Special Revenue Fund. Would have been about, uh, two million one hundred and eighty-five thousand had it been, uh, invested in the other, uh, vehicles available to us.
Wow.
So it's returned actually about one point two million because what that graph didn't show is the three hundred thousand dollars that we pulled out of the fund over that period to fund the pavilions at the pool in Gainesboro and the Gainesboro pathway lighting. So these, these are examples of projects that we can do, uh, without costing anything, without using any taxpayer money, without using any property taxes. When we did the Parks and Recreation Millage in twenty fifteen, it raised a million dollars. So we've already raised one point two over the last seven years from the Parks and Revenue Special Recreation Fund. And, uh, used another thirty percent of that one million to boot, so. Future uses, uh, we want to continue to grow that principal balance of the Parks, uh, Special Revenue Fund. Um, as we know, if you protect your principal, you can continue to grow your future returns. So that's our primary goal, but also provide capital funding for future parks projects. And an example of this is we can eliminate the need for future parks millages. Um, you know, one of the things in Pleasant Ridge is we have invested in our community. We had the, it was point seven five mils when it was approved. It's been, uh, reduced to point six five five seven mils for the Gainesboro Park Millage. We also have the one point one one mil pool death millage, which is ending in twenty twenty-eight. So that's one and three quarters mil, uh, mils that's gonna come off the tax rolls. And our goal is that we, we don't have to do any, any future Parks and Recreation millages. Uh, that this will be a vehicle to allow us to, to do the things that we've had to tax ourselves to do in the past. So, um, I think that's some good news.
That's amazing.
Like a three and a half for, for, for water, but we've got one and three quarters that's coming off soon. So we definitely want to take care, um, of that. So this is just, you know, in, in terms of the annual return, it's, it's over eight percent for what we received through Vanguard, uh, which is where the Special Revenue Fund is invested. Uh, the Oakland County Investment Pool has returned an annual return of one and a half percent over that same period. Our expected twenty twenty-one return, you can see in the Parks Special Revenue Fund is two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars versus thirty-two in the Oakland County Investment Pool. And of course, one thing that we have to note is that is a good return and that, that would be a good amount of money we could use for lead service lines. But one of the, I guess, maybe drawbacks of the Parks Special Revenue Fund is it has to be used for parks, capital expenditures.
Can I ask a question? Could you ever, like, is there ever any way to modify it? Like, is there any way to challenge it? I mean, I'm just curious.
It's a provision in state law.
Okay.
That allows us to do this. Um, so there's not a lot of wiggle room or flexibility.
Okay.
So the question is, we could move the money out in a regular S C A F and use that money for the water infrastructure, but your returns would be much, much, much lower.
Right.
So, really, you know, the benefit here is indirect.
Yep.
Let's keep investing in our parks without having to spend any more millage money on parks.
And there's never a shortage of other projects.
No, no, there's not.
And, you know, you have to renew your parks, you know, Gainesboro Park was done in the nineties, it needed to be redone in the, in the twenty teens. So we'll continue to keep our parks current without letting them get outdated. Any questions?
That's amazing.
That's really good.
Thank you.
You will be able to read more about the, the asset fund in chapter nineteen.
It's like, are you doing a teaser right now?
It's gonna be another year.
Buckle up, everyone.
Can we put fund options on a Facebook forum so people can?
Wait, with voting buttons?
Yeah.
Too funny.
Uh, next item on the agenda is the Woodward Heights Consultant Scope of Work Discussion.
Yes, um, briefly, we, we know that Woodward Heights has been a topic of discussion and we know that the stop signs have made a difference by moving them. I have not received as many emails from one part of, uh, Woodward Heights. I'm getting more emails from the other part of Woodward Heights now.
Yep.
We know this, um, stop signs are.
And we are not laughing, we, at the problem, we are.
They, we know that.
Moves.
It's, it's tough.
Right, so as we've tried to deal with the issue that is Woodward Heights and the fact that solutions that one group of residents like, invariably, there's been another group of residents that don't like them on Woodward Heights. So we've gotten, been chasing our tail a little bit. And, uh, I, as I was pondering what we could do next, we have the petition on the table to close Woodward Heights down and we were gonna do the survey. And it, uh, rather than continue to chase our tail here with us talking to the residents again about solutions and, and possibly not finding them, I think it's time to, uh, bring in to, an outside gun. And I'm suggesting that, uh, we hire a consultant to take us through a process, to lead a process, to, to do the survey, to bring their, uh, transportation engineering expertise to the table, to lead a process to engage the residents of Woodward Heights. Um, a professional outside voice to, to come in and, uh, hopefully identify something, you know, once and for all that, that we can do on Woodward Heights, uh, to address this issue. So in the, uh, packet is, uh, suggested scope of work. I am also suggesting that we use a qualifications-based selection process. Uh, one thing I don't like is a request for proposals where we specify the scope and then everyone comes in with a price and then you kind of have to hire your lowest price vendor. With services like this, the federal government uses qualifications-based contracting for all their architecture, engineering, design work because you want to get the right person, there's price and there's value. So let's get the right, uh, consultant in that's gonna do the best job for us. And then we can work with them to define the final scope and the final price at that point. I was a consultant for ten years and a qualifications-based process is, is always better. There are times where we were not the low bid, but we were the consultant that the community liked the most. But they couldn't select us, even though we easily could have adjusted a scope to meet their cost needs. So I'm firmly suggesting we use the qualifications-based process. Given the general, uh, parameters, what we're dealing with, the, the generalized scope would be for the consultant to conduct this, the resident survey regarding traffic issues that we discussed last month to identify traffic calming and management techniques and actions that can be applied to Woodward Heights and to work with the Woodward Heights residents to seek consensus among the residents on the street about those potential changes or actions to address traffic issues. Uh, one final thing that I'd, I'd request is, um, some guidance from the commission about a selection committee for the, uh, when we get the results from this back. Um, I'd suggest that we nominate, uh, a couple of city commissioners and a couple of planning commissioners. And then I don't know if there's anyone else that we would want to identify. Um, you could put a resident on that, but how do you identify the resident from Woodward Heights? You know, if you want to, if we want to try that, we can, but generally, we'd use a couple of city commissioners and a, a planning commissioner or two if you wanted to, you know, go that route. So I would request some direction so we can begin to get that together. Particularly if we're gonna ask planning commissioners, uh, we can ask them at the October meeting, which will be in a couple of weeks. So, um, with that, the, the, the request is for city commission authorization for staff. Uh, it says R F P. in the, uh, I would amend that to R F Q., uh, for professional services.
I will ask if someone will make a motion to approve.
Your honor, I move that the city commission authorize staff to release an R F P. to retain the services of qualified.
R F Q.
Oh, sorry. It's not, oh, oh, that's right, it says R F P., sorry. To retain the services of qualified consultants to conduct the resident survey regarding traffic issues on Woodward Heights and potential closure of the street. Identify traffic calming and management techniques and actions that can be applied to Woodward Heights and work with Woodward Heights residents to seek consensus among the residents of the street on potential changes or actions to address traffic issues.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion, any questions?
Yeah, your honor, I, I was just gonna say, I think this is great to have a fresh, a fresh set of, set of eyes to, to take a look at this and engage the, the folks on Woodward Heights, I think it's great.
I'm happy about it too.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's a really good, really good situation.
Yeah, I've started talking with a couple of the different residents about it and, you know, so they're aware and they're very, they're happy to see, you know, just some engagement to try and figure things out.
Mm-hmm. I can't wait to see what comes of it. Should be interesting. Um, may we take a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Budnick?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, yes, motion carries. Jim, what do you need from us?
Um, so, as long as you're generally in, uh, consensus, we'll ask for a couple of planning commissioners.
Yeah.
Once the new commission is seated and it's time to select, we'll ask for the commissioners to select a couple of members for the selection committee from the new group and then, uh, we'll get going.
Can I make a quick comment?
Please.
My name's Tom, I'm at sixteen Fairwood. Thank you. This, this is a, this is a friendly comment. I just want to just expand the conversation. My name's Tom, I'm at sixteen Fairwood. And I know this keeps getting referred to as the Woodward Heights issue. It is beyond that. It affects other streets, including Fairwood and Indiana and, uh, Sylvan. So, when you're talking about it, please keep that in mind. It's not just those residents.
That's a good point.
That's a very good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
See, it was worth staying around. All right. Next item is the city manager's report.
Um, yes, I don't have much. Uh, leaf collection begins November first. Police chief kind of stole my thunder there. Please don't put your leaves in the street because then we get everyone complaining that the streets don't drain when it rains. Um, and I know that leaves fall in the street, but we don't need extra placed out there, uh, ahead of time. Beyond that, uh, uh, beyond that, uh,
Recognizing that this is the last, uh, full meeting for Mayor Metzger.
Nice.
We wanted to present you with a, a small token of our appreciation. We know that you're always a fan of implements. We were gonna get you some giant scissors, but we thought that-
Not my giant scissors.
So, don't let the grand-
Ah, there it goes.
Don't let the grandkids, uh, get hold of that.
I won't let them know. I'm sure they'll have a great time. Thank you so much.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say, Mayor Metzger, it's been, it's been my honor and pleasure to, uh, to work for you for all of these years. Um, as I said, I was a consultant for ten years and I drove around the state, uh, you know, working with different planning commissions and city councils and township boards and, and you name it. And, and all the years, you're are easily in the, the very top echelon of public officials I worked for. I mean, it could just be, yes. It could just be that you love charts and graphs and data and-
That whisper plot stuff.
Yes. And, you know, you, we speak each other's language when it comes to, to nerding out on that, but, uh, I, I want to say thank you. It's been an honor.
Thank you as well. As I said in my post, because I knew I wouldn't be able to get through it tonight and I didn't know how late we'd be here. Um, it's been, as I said, the best choice, the best decision I ever made was, um, when we picked you as city manager, so.
Thank you.
It's been, it's been wonderful.
It's been a good run. Yeah, it has.
It has, thanks. Thank you for that. Um, other business, elections, of course, of course.
Uh, there'll be an election November second, two city commissioners, mayor seat, millage question. Uh, we have four hundred absentee ballots out right now for processing. They are still available. Um, contact city hall and request an application. You can stop in, you can give us a call, send an email. You can also request a ballot online through the state of Michigan website. Um, that comes directly to us and then we send the ballot out to you. We will be open October thirtieth, that's a Saturday, from nine AM until four PM to issue absentee ballots and take them in, give them out. So, you have that day. If you can't make it during the week and you need a weekend day, that Saturday we'll be here. Um, ballots will also be available on Monday. You just won't be able to take it with you. You'll have to vote that at city hall if you choose to come in and vote absentee on Monday. The polls will be open November second from seven AM to eight PM. All the voting will be at the community center. Masks are required in all city buildings, so masks are required. Um, refreshments for that, still kind of up in the air. We didn't have them at the last in-person election. Um, so we'll see what's gonna happen with that, but, uh, there'll be election inspectors there to help you every step of the way. Pretty easy process. And that's about it.
Cool.
Great. Any other?
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, I also, well, I'm not gonna get through it, but we will, I just want to thank you for-
I'm coming back next week. I'm coming back. I'll be here next month, you know, I get to gavel this.
And then you're gonna leave.
And then I'm walking out.
But it has been, because you've really been with us for ten years, really helping get you. And you've made such a big difference and you've really helped, like, connect Pleasant Ridge to our larger region and to the state in really important ways that it's been, it's been very cool. And I appreciate your patience and Jody's patience, as well as your impatience sometimes, which I need that as well. And what was always fun was watching you do weddings and how much you loved, like,
I loved the wedding.
Just the joy that that sort of brought to the whole thing. And, you know, and you really helped lead us through some really difficult times, like with, you know, you were very thoughtful through the whole COVID thing and all these different, you know, financial challenges and city manager search challenges and all these different things. And you really led us with, with elegance and just, and grace and we really appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
She told me I had gravitas, that's why I should run. And all I keep telling her is, just take a break. Breathe, stop this. Stop talking to people, just. That's, that's all I've been able to do is just try to calm her down. Impossible, still haven't been able to do it. You were the reason I got, got started and, uh, I thank you for everything.
Well, thank you.
We'll talk.
Okay, we'll talk. I'll still trash you guys.
Um, anything else other than this?
Well, Mayor, I also wanted to thank Commissioner Wall, because it's like the work you have done, you have brought so much joy and sort compassion and also just thoughtfulness in so many ways. It's like you and I, it took a while for us to get to know each other. You know, we came from sort of different places, but it's like I've learned so much from you. And what you have brought sort of to this whole process has been just brilliant. And I am so happy that you're continuing on to be the president of the foundation because it will, um, I don't know, I know that's such a great group and it has so much, like, just, um, I think, what you're gonna bring to it is gonna make it even more advantageous for the city. Because, you know, I, you just bring such good energy to things and I can't thank you enough for everything you've done here.
Thank you. I'm gonna miss everybody and-
Well, this mutual admiration society.
I get to sit on both sides of them. I miss them greatly.
I know, it's gonna change.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Mayor, before you lift the gavel, would it be possible for me to make one last comment?
Of course, you may, you may.
Jay Foreman, Sixty Oakdale, once again, um, I wanted to extend my, my thanks to you and all that you've given to this city over your time here as serving as mayor and before. And to Jody for sharing you with us for all of these years. Thank you so much. It was my pleasure to work with you and my pleasure to see this commission move on without me. Again, I love living here as much as anyone else.
You could, did you?
But the other reason I'm here tonight is there's an agenda item on every meeting and I feel there's a piece of it that was missed. And I haven't been here in a while, so I don't know if maybe things have changed, but is there no discussion of book club anymore? Other business section, we're supposed to have book club.
I know, I know.
Maybe think in the next commission, maybe we get that going.
We should have a-
Tom, Katie, Alex.
Talk about your books.
A designated book club person.
I can't take it.
Thanks for that, Jay. Um, anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I would like to make the motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Tomorrow, we, the next, next month, we get this-